Really needed that? Ready?
Oh.
Good evening, everybody. Call this August council meeting to order. The second item on our agendas this evening is roll call. All members have reported present with the exception of older person Stack, who is out of the area and requested to attend the council meeting via telephone. This council does not have a specific rule allowing or disallowing the appearance of members by telephone, although it has happened in the past in rare circumstances. So, it's been recommended that if the council is inclined to allow Mr. Stack to appear via phone for this council meeting, that a motion be made to that effect. Majority of the older persons will have to vote in the affirmative to allow Mr. Stack to appear by telephone. So, with that said, is there a motion to allow Mr. Stack to appear by phone?
No move.
A motion. Got a motion by Kirk Patrick and it's seconded by Worrell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote with a voice vote. All in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Alright. That passes with the exception, it sounds like, of one dissent. So, Mr. Stack, welcome to the council meeting. Can you just maybe do a check for us just to make sure we can hear you over your mic?
Hello? Good evening, everyone.
Alright. Well, hopefully you're making your way safely to your final destination to see your daughter. So, we'll have you appear via phone. Thank you for that. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation. I'd invite people to please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move into item number four, which is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which council members is attachments number one and two and in your packets. I'd entertain a motion to approve. Older person Kirk Patrick.
Motion to dispense with reading place on file.
You have a motion and a second by Perkey. Any discussion on those two attachments? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That passes. Next item on our agenda is item number five, which is the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure. Given the number of people in the audience tonight, I will make a comment to the sort of the explanation. I've already been cut off. I guess he can do that to you if you're at the podium, I suppose. So, the, anyone wishing to address the body may do so this evening after being recognized by a council member or myself, at which you will be allowed five minutes to speak on an item, only appearing on our agenda. And I would stress that you will only be able to speak on items appearing in front of us. We do have a few, two annexation requests, which public hearings were previously held on those two items. So, I would indicate that previously that those two public hearings were already held, but we would allow if an older person wishes to yield some time to members of the audience to be able to speak, that they have the ability to do so. Next item on the agenda is my report. Good evening, older person staff and residents here or watching from home. As with previous month's reports, my goal is to highlight some of the many items that come across my desk or I partake in, in following the last council meeting. As part of the Mayor's Council on Beautification, last month, Wisconsin Rapids was proud to host two judges from the American Bloom Program, who toured our community with the goal of giving an outsider's perspective and feedback on our community's beautification efforts. The judge's visit included locations that gave our visitors a sense of Wisconsin Rapids' history, where we've come from, as well as visiting current community projects to get a sense of where we're headed. They concluded their visit by attending our monthly beautification council meeting, where they shared initial feedback impressions after touring our community. Their initial feedback included observations of very strong impressions from the new hanging basket program and the work of the master gardeners in the area. The judges noted that our tree, city's tree planting efforts appear to be heading in the right direction, and that the Growing Friends Community Garden is a shining example of an inclusive and successful effort. Finally, the judges shared their observations of a community's strong sense of history and suggested we create more opportunities to share. A full comprehensive written evaluation of our community with suggestions of potential projects will be sent to all of us and to the council in the coming weeks. Last month, Wisconsin Rapids experienced, as many of us know, a quick-moving storm that impacted many residents with damage done by hail. Although not as severe as the 'oh seven' storm, significant property damage still occurred to roofs and many vehicles. Immediately after the storm struck, city staff and I initiated response, including requiring out-of-town transient merchants to be registered to solicit business in Wisconsin Rapids, as well as releasing an official statement from my office and the city informing residents on what our requirements were and tips for contractor repair. The city is finishing formulating a conclusive list of all damage sustained during the storm to city buildings, vehicles, and smaller property items. I'm happy to report that all the damage to some city property was moderate. Initial damage estimates and repair costs are not as significant as we all know to what we incurred in 2007. Last week, we had the exciting announcement here in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. At a meeting conference last Wednesday, Riverview Hospital Association and Johnny Alexander YMCA announced a mutual letter of intent to collaborate on the construction and operation of a new YMCA facility in Wisconsin Rapids. Proposed to be on land located, donated by Riverview Hospital, the facility will be designed to address a wide range of community health and wellness needs, as well as an expansion of Riverview's services. As the city's aquatic facilities reach the end of their useful life, there is much to be excited for with this announcement. At my State of the City address in January, I called for the need to find a more long-term, permanent solution to our aquatic needs. One that is sustainable and demonstrates fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer and its contributors. I look forward to working with both organizations, residents, and each of you on the council in moving this project forward. Last week, city staff were introduced to GIS applications being worked on by our GIS specialist, Chris Canty. Chris has been working on two applications, one for internal use by city staff, and one of which is very close to being released to the public. Related to creating a more streamlined and modernized city government, GIS is a very valuable tool for combining visual communication with access to information and analytics. In talking with departments regarding what residents often inquire about, it became clear to me that there were opportunities for making information available 24/7 to residents and employees to provide answers to frequently asked questions or information on road construction, rush pickup schedules, and even location of parks. With both of the internal and public GIS applications, the possibilities of information we can provide and generate are endless. We are in the final stage of tweaking both applications and expect a formal release of both in the coming weeks. General proclamations issued, General Aviation Appreciation Week, July 27 through August 1st, coinciding with EAA's events, I proclaim the week of July 27 through August 1st, General Aviation Appreciation Week. In the proclamation, we join municipalities around Wisconsin in recognizing the importance of general aviation and our network of local airports in the state of Wisconsin. In closing, I hope you find value in the sampling of what my weeks consist of. As a reminder, I encourage residents to subscribe to my community update online, which includes much more in-depth reports on many items that cross my desk in my office, and if you're not online, catch variations recorded on RCCA media or request a print version of the weekly report from my office. With that, we'll move into item number seven, annexation requests. Item A is a petition filed by Steve Klavine, SK Builders, and an ordinance for the direct annexation of property located west of 16th Street South and approximately 600 feet south of Rosewood Avenue from the town of Grand Rapids, which in your council packets is attachments three, four, and five.
Just for the council people that you'll take six yes votes for both these petitions for annexation to pass?
Thank you. Council members, questions, comments, or I'd entertain a motion to approve seven, eight. We have a motion by Tom Rayom. Is there a second? Second by older person Kellogg. Move into discussion. Any discussion on the request? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Oh, I'm sorry. Voice vote? Shane's, let's get his system going here. Okay, you can cast your ballots now. Shane's ready. Jim, how would you like to vote this evening?
Aye.
Okay. Yes.
Motion carried. Eight a's and zero nays.
The next item on our agenda under annexation requests, item number seven, is a petition filed by Aspiris Clinics Incorporated on behalf of Gordon and Donna Manki Trust and MWH Real Estate, and an ordinance for the direct annexation of property located at the northeast corner of Chestnut Street and 20th Street South from the town of Grand Rapids, which council members is attachment six, seven, and eight in your council packet. Council members, I had to entertain a motion.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I would ask if anybody in the audience would want to make any comments.
Older person Rayom would like to yield his time to somebody from the audience. Mr. Barard, would you like to come forward? Sels, if you could please state your name, your address to the body, and make sure the microphone is on, so you're picked up on the recording. So, there'd be a push button that should light up.
My name is Sels Barard, and my address is 6120 Ashbury Drive, Grand Rapids. I'd like to thank Alderman Rayom for, and the members of the city council for giving me this opportunity to speak. I would also like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to all the people who have come out to support Riverview and its more than 100-year history to our community. I'd also like to thank Fran Aaron, Kelly Rose Crans, and Tim Burkhauser, members of the planning committee, for their vote of confidence last week in Riverview Hospital. Although many of you may already know me, I have been a member of this community, and I have had the honor and the privilege of being the president of Riverview Hospital for 26 years. To be clear, at the heart of everything I say here tonight, it's patient care. I think it is important to note from the onset, we value the relationship we have with the physicians and staff at Aspiris Doctors Clinic. They are our friends, and they are our neighbors. Together, we have provided health care to a community that we all care so deeply about. I have to ask myself if having two hospitals in a community our size would be too much of a good thing. We certainly are not against competition. Our overriding concern centers on patient care. At the end of the day, will two competing, potentially weakened hospitals be better for our patients in our community than one that is robust? I firmly believe that a community our size cannot support two vibrant hospitals. A duplication of services won't improve health care in our community. At this point, we have heard nothing that indicates that the services will be substantially different than anything Riverview already offers. We've been hearing from folks in the community that a second hospital would keep more patients here. We simply don't believe that is true. People who need specialized care will continue to go where that care is offered. For example, we don't do open-heart surgery. If we did, we would only have enough volume to do the surgery once or twice a week. We think it is best that patients go where those kinds of surgeries are done every day. In addition, another hospital will impede the practices of independent practitioners who are members of our community, like Dr. Joel Carlson, Dr. Guardan Miller, as well as the orthopedic surgeons at Wisconsin River Orthopedic. Having two hospitals in a small community would be similar to having two city governments in Wisconsin Rapids, with the same tax base being divided between the two. Both governments would have to provide safety services, garbage pickup, street services, etc., but to maintain the quality and the level of services that the citizens have come to expect, taxes would have to be raised. Or services would have to be reduced. It makes sense that Wisconsin Rapids has one city government. The same can be said for a hospital. Is it realistic? Is it practical to have two separate entities providing the same services, investing in the same expensive equipment, and covering the operational cost of two facilities? As community healthcare needs have been identified, Riverview has been proactive in addressing them. Just last week, Riverview announced the donation of land and signed a letter of intent to partner with the Johnny Alexander Southwood County YMCA on construction of a new YMCA and Aquatic Center, which brings a new level of health and wellness services to the area. This agreement is the result of 18 months of discussion between our two committed boards. It is an exciting partnership, which will benefit our community in many ways. In addition, Riverview's outcomes are excellent. Just this year, Riverview was recognized for being one of the top hospitals in the state for safe surgical outcomes. We received national recognition from the Joint Commission for our work in infection control, and our joint center has outstanding results and a lower cost than anywhere in the state of Wisconsin. This is the result of Riverview Board leadership and staff trying to stay true to our mission, vision, and values. So, what does it mean to be a community-owned hospital? Why is it important? It means that the members of the governing board are all members of our community, and all decisions are made for the good of our community. It also means that earnings are reinvested right back into the community through facility enhancements, as well as through support to other local organizations. More specifically, since members of our community established Riverview in 1912, we have focused on one objective, and that objective is serving our community's healthcare needs. It is also important for us, for you, to know that Riverview plays a valuable role in the local economy. Riverview employs 650 individuals from this community with an annual payroll of $35 million. The retirement plan and other investments are all held at local financial institutions. Riverview also believes in and makes every effort to use local contractors and vendors. If you were to have driven by Riverview Hospital during our cancer center expansion, you would have seen trucks from Ron's Refrigeration, Aaron &amp; G., Roosh Drywall, Econ Electric, Current Technology. They are all locally-owned businesses. The Riverview Hospital Association, the Riverview Hospital Auxiliary, and Riverview employees have a history of giving to the community through their time, talents, and monetary donations to organizations like United Way, Neighborhood Table, Family Centers, our schools, as well as other nonprofit organizations, and events that help define and enhance the community. Voting no on the annexation is not a vote against progress. It is a yes vote in support of what Riverview already brings to the community. It is a vote for smart, patient-focused progress. A few days ago, I was approached by Sharon Dietzler, who has worked in the Riverview Lab for 12 years. Sharon handed me this document, and she told me she wanted to donate it to Riverview Archives. This is the original paperwork from the birth of Sharon's uncle in 1937. This is the history and the legacy I hope you can appreciate. Our history is integral to the history of this community, and our future is intimately tied to the health and wellbeing of Southwood County. You know, all doctors take an oath to do no harm. Tonight, we are asking that through your vote, you do no harm to the patients of our community. I thank you for your time tonight, and I ask for your support. I'd like to...
All the person, all the persons with you. Any further discussion or any questions for the speaker? Thank you.
If I could, could I turn the podium or share the podium with Andy Metcalf, our president and CEO of Riverview Healthcare Foundation?
Provided somebody yields the time. Older person Kellogg would like to recognize it. Mr. Metcalf, please introduce yourself, state your address. Thank you.
My name is Andy Metcalf. I live at 2310 River Birch Lane here in Wisconsin Rapids. I'm the president of the Riverview Healthcare Foundation, as well as the owner of a family-owned business that's been in this community for 80 years. And I'm, my pleasure to represent over 5,500 individuals, families, and businesses that have given to the Riverview Healthcare Foundation since 1984. On behalf of these individuals, I too would like to thank everybody that has spoken up on behalf of Riverview, whether it's through your letters, emails, letters to the editor, phone calls to council members. The support is so indicative of our community and their attitude towards their locally-owned Riverview Hospital. The Riverview Healthcare Foundation manages nearly $4 million in assets. Since 1984, has granted over 300 grants totaling over $4.5 million. Where do these funds go to? Where are they used, you might want to ask? Of course, a lot of the funds go right back into our Riverview Hospital to support for equipment needs, programming, and other things that happen in our hospital. But what do we give back to the community? What does the foundation do in the community? $285,000 was given to the Johnny Alexander Southwood County YMCA. And Sels had just touched on, you know, the tremendous work that we're preparing to do with the YMCA here in the very near future. Since 2006, the Riverview Healthcare Foundation has given over $83,000 to the hospital to use for interpreter services. And two, until two years ago, I never even realized we needed interpreters at a hospital. $83,000 to help people, and they come through our doors at that hospital. Since 2005, the foundation has given $105,000 to UW Cancer Center Riverview Cancer Patient Fund. Since 2009, we've given $46,000 to the Riverview Patient Care Fund. These two funds are very similar, but just used in different places. These are funds that are designed to help those that are in financial need and can't afford things as simple as medication, transportation to get to and from the hospital, some medical needs that they may have with the equipment. Sometimes it's a place to stay, sometimes it's food to eat. There's no reason that somebody should have to go to make a decision between getting their medications or eating. And the foundation is there to step up and try and help these people, to aid them to a speedy recovery and a full recovery. $256,000 has been given to local fire and EMS programs in our community. $125,000 of that was given to our own Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department for training and equipment to bring every one of their personnel from basic EMTs up to critical care paramedics. Just recently, our fire department in Wisconsin Rapids was recognized as one of only two nationally-accredited municipal ambulance services in our community. Think of the level of care they're able to provide when we really need it in our community. 2002, $1 million was given to support the UW Cancer Center Riverview Construction Project. The hospital identified a serious need in our community. We have an aging population, and cancer is becoming more prevalent. People are having to get in their cars and drive somewhere for cancer treatments. Riverview said, "Not in our community." There's no reason to do that. We stepped up, we built the cancer center, not knowing that it was also going to create a world-class cancer center right here, a destination for people to travel to for their cancer care. We have patients from Ashland, Managua, Tamahawk, Wapaka, Watoma, Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, Florida, staying right here in our community to receive world-class cancer care. Boys and Girls Club of Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin Rapids Family Center, The Rapids Family Backpacks, a program that's relatively new to our community, where children that receive food assistance through the week at school are able to take some food home over the weekends in a backpack. The foundation stepped up to help some of these kids and their families. Running Clubs at our local elementary schools to encourage exercise and healthy living habits. The list goes on. But I guess more importantly, where do these funds come from? Community appeals. The Riverview Healthcare Foundation holds an annual community appeal that raises over $100,000 a year on average, with barely an ask. Sometimes the checks, excuse me?
Your five minutes has been reached. I would entertain someone from the council to yield additional time to allow you to speak. Otherwise, another member could, would be allowed to finish your remarks as well. Okay. Thank you.
Riverview Employee Payroll Deduction Plan. Our first organized payroll deduction plan for employees at Riverview raised over $36,000 for use in the hospital and our community. Oddly enough, the first donor to that program wasn't a doctor, wasn't a nurse, wasn't an administration, was a member of our housekeeping. That's how passionate they feel about the place they work and the community in which they live. In 2002, the foundation led a capital campaign that raised over $4 million to construct the cancer center. Only after it was over did the consultant share with us that he could not believe the passion and the generosity of our community. We probably didn't even need a consultant. Once again, only after the campaign was over. Since 1995, the volunteers, the Ladies Riverview Auxiliary, have been in our community volunteering and raising funds for the hospital. Just in the last 20 years alone, the auxiliary has raised over $1.5 million, including a Love Lights program for use in our hospital. 100% of the funds the foundation receives go back to the hospital and stay right here in our community. They're not going to other communities, they're not going to other places, it's staying right here in our community. Yesterday, I was asked a question. What do you think the perfect healthcare system in our community will be like? I am far from qualified to be able to answer that question, but I know there are some people in this room that have the answer and how that could be done. But as a member in this community, I envision a system in which all the providers work together in our community for the welfare of the community, not for their own individual agendas. Providers are passionate about the needs of the community, and the community is passionate about the needs of its providers. Council members, your vote tonight, not supporting the motion before you, is not a vote to compromise the quality or accessibility of health care. the quality or accessibility of healthcare in our community. Your vote tonight not supporting the motion is not an anti-business vote or a vote against progress or government intervention in business. Your vote tonight is a vote supporting a healthcare organization that has stood the test of time and for over 100 years has provided compassionate healthcare in your community and been a good steward to a community that has passionately embraced it and its mission for over 100 years. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your Riverview.
Thank you. All the persons? There has not been a motion made, so if somebody would like to make the motion, otherwise, continue the trend of recognizing individuals. Looks like Dr. Volker would like to address the body. If somebody want to recognize Dr. Volker?
I'll recognize Dr. Volker.
We've got two recognitions, so please come to the podium, in which you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Alderman, and I won't take five minutes. Riverview certainly has an impressive past, and we've been part of that past. But Aspiris is not here about the past, we're here to talk about the future. You've all seen the presentation. We've talked about healthcare reform and how that's changing the rules about how healthcare is delivered. Coordination of care is really the answer. We really need to be able to control the care that our patient is given throughout all aspects of their care, in the clinic, before they go in the hospital, after they go in the hospital, and when they go to receive more advanced care. In the present model, that has not been possible. Our plan is to bring the future of healthcare to Wisconsin Rapids. Just two weeks ago, it was announced that Aspiris has joined with five other major groups, Aurora Healthcare in Milwaukee, Bellin Healthcare in Green Bay, Theta Care in Appleton, UW in Madison, and Gunderson Healthcare in La Crosse, to create a statewide accountable care organization which will help bring this coordination of care to the patient. Without this, it's not going to be possible to get good, quality care at a quality cost, and frankly, it's not going to be possible, in our view, to stay in business. I fear not for Riverview if we proceed with this project from a competition standpoint. I fear for Riverview if they continue to live in the rules of healthcare in the past. In addition, there have not been very many real exciting economic opportunities brought to Wisconsin Rapids in these past few years, and this certainly is one. The city has had plans to expand the Highway 54 corridor, and we think this could be a real good start to a major expansion of that corridor. So Aspiris has to go through with this project with our vision of the future. Our preference is to do this project adjacent to our clinic, in the land that we're talking about annexing tonight, but it's a project that we need to go forward with. So I ask for your vote in favor of the annexation, the zoning, and the conditional use issues that have been brought to you tonight.
The motion by Furkey, is there a second? And a second by Kellogg, move into further discussion, and if you would hit your button, Scott, please, for Shane's records up here. Motion and a second, move into discussion. Discussion, I guess. All the person, Patrick, please.
Thank you. I prepared a little bit of my thoughts as I kind of sat here. Not going to pretend like I read all 64 emails that came my way. I've been moving in the last week, and so that has consumed virtually 99% of my time. What I have prepared, though, I'm not going to pretend to speak for the rest of my colleagues up here. Take it for what it's worth. I have been bothered by this entire process from the get-go. I've expressed my dislike of the process of how it was brought forth to the city council from the members of Aspiris with the one-on-one meetings to the council members. I still feel those meetings should have taken place through a closed-door session of a committee or the whole. I'm also bothered by the notions that have been circulating around town. Many of these arguments revolve around the idea that the people and businesses of Wisconsin Rapids need protection against the influence of outside businesses. It seems to me, from the correspondence I received, that Riverview Hospital, hospital employees, and residents of the community believe that it is the job of the city and the city council to protect established businesses from outside influence. We have, the city, an unfortunate history in this regard. In the 1890s, the city council decided it was against our best interests to allow a state university to be built. The refusal to allow that project led to the creation of University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, and in turn, led to the development of the I-39 corridor through Portage County instead of Wood County in the mid-20th century. In the 70s, 80s, and 90s, the city had opportunities to expand manufacturing in other areas, but again, established business interests projected power upon the city council, and we lost out on diversifying our manufacturing and industrial base. We've since lost more and more jobs in the paper manufacturing sector as a direct result of these protectionist policies. And now we have another locally-owned established business coming to the city council demanding that we take appropriate action by preventing this proposed project from going forward. In short, this local business is demanding that the city allow the continuation and the establishment of a corporate monopoly in the healthcare sector. As far as that is to be concerned, our healthcare system is a for-profit enterprise, right or wrong, better or worse. Since our healthcare system is for-profit enterprise, it's part of a market. Markets thrive when there is competition to drive down costs and increase innovative output. The healthcare market is like the food industry. People go where they will prefer and want to go to spend their money. Until the day comes when this country has a socialized medical system in place, it has the right of for-profit businesses to expand their business model into new markets. No city may legally stand in the way of that. I've heard things like Aspiris isn't local, Riverview is. I'm not going to pretend like I know every single person that works at Aspiris, but those that I do know live in Wisconsin Rapids. They're friends, citizens, neighbors, they're residents of Wisconsin Rapids. It seems that people are concerned that because Aspiris isn't headquartered in Wisconsin Rapids, that it makes it bad, makes it an outside entity that should be feared and kept away. If that's the case, then the people of this community need to stop eating at McDonald's and Applebee's and instead begin eating at Chips and the Olympic. I hope that sounds completely ridiculous. I've heard there is a great fear of duplication of services. Again, being a for-profit healthcare market, let your money do the talking. If you don't like or want to go to Aspiris and think that Riverview should get the business, don't go to Aspiris, go to Riverview. This community has an aging population that's demanding and will continue to demand more and more and greater healthcare services. I believe there's room in this community for both organizations at some level. I don't want to see this project become a lost or missed opportunity because of shortsightedness as we've seen over the last almost 150 years. Thank you.
All the persons, I don't have anybody else wishing to speak on the board. Anyone wishes to do so, please indicate. All the person, please.
And I'll keep it real short. The speakers already have stated, I think, from both sides the case. I will say upfront that, I guess, over the past few weeks, I have not been convinced that two hospitals can survive in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And I don't think it's fair to compare us to other cities that do unless you compare them to the communities of the same size. Duplication of services, I would almost bet it's going to happen. What strikes me hard, not in a bad way, is the issue of patient care. Now, I don't know if I should say one cares more than the other, but I do see the one that wants to come in is the one that wants, to me, make the money before the patient With two of these hospitals and clinics, it, I guess, hours, full-time people have either had their hours reduced, I would bet, or become part-time. And part-time people may have had to go to other facilities, communities, to find some work to fill in that part-time in the same profession. And that's, I just don't see, I have not been convinced that the X number of jobs to be created will be there for the lasting time. And also, the ones that would be there or left there, there is going to be a drain at Riverview. So if both would survive, but at a very, very reduced rate of what they're doing, uh, progress, we may end up with the same amount of workers, but at two different places. I really feel it's going to become, you know, if the survival of the fittest. Does, and who can outlast who? That's part of my problem too with supporting this. They know that two can't survive and are willing yet to come in to just do that. So I guess, Your Honor, and my colleagues, I guess you can see what my vote is going to be in the next few minutes, probably a few minutes of that, then I guess I would encourage council members that may be on the verge, that don't know, can't decide which way to go, stay with the Riverview as the sole provider, the hospital in Wisconsin Rapids. Another, I guess, and I'll end it, another question or comment that, I guess it was both that came up is, which hospital do people go to in an emergency? Which hospital does our ambulance crew take somebody to? Is it necessarily the one that's going to be the closest? Or are we somewhere down the road going to make a rule of if they're there, they go there, and if they're there, they go there? So, Your Honor, I'll end this. I appreciate turning out. I wish people would come down here for other issues, too, like this, to lend their support or against whatever is being considered to be done. So I'll end that, Your Honor.
Thank you. All the person Furkey, you're next.
Thank you all for coming out. I sure appreciate your passion in your emails and in your phone calls and in private talks that we've shared, a bunch of you and myself. Throughout my, throughout my life, all my broken bones were taken care of at Riverview. I was treated very well. I will continue to be treated very well at Riverview. When I spoke with Mr. Burrard and Mr. Bovey, I encouraged them very strongly to look for other revenue streams, and I was so thrilled to see the YMCA announcement. Please do not be discouraged, no matter which way this vote goes. You're good people, and you will do well. You will continue to do well because you have done well. And I know a lot of you, I know a lot of you from my church, I count you as friends, I count you as brothers and sisters of Christ, and you will do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, all the person, Patrick, your second time speaking, please.
I just had a question for the requestor, if I might. Mr. Volker, was it, I'm sorry? If you please. It's my understanding, and you, I believe you've sort of alluded to it here tonight, when you said that this project will go forward, I believe were your words. It's my understanding that there is another plan in place if this were to fail. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. We do have an option on land in Beeren to proceed with this project there if it's not approved in Wisconsin Rapids, and we intend to do so.
Okay. So, you know, I, I don't think I need to say anything else about a thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the requestor? All the person, I see you're going for your remote. Please. Go ahead.
People want to hear, maybe. Maybe not. Sometimes and sometimes not. That is a thing that maybe didn't come through with what I was saying. You do or stick your head in the guillotine. The threat, I guess, has been made, officially made. If a deal has been worked out already with another community, I am really saddened. And for reasons that we have, that have been said, I would hope the other communities would support the decision of the council, Wisconsin Rapids, and that is to deny the request for annexation. Ask that from surrounding communities for their support as we ask and say that we are a regional group. So I, I don't personally like to be threatened. To me, it is. Thank you.
Any other questions for the requestor or any other discussion? All the person stacked, did you have anything you wanted to say? Is this mic on? I can hear you, but I don't know if we can hear you on the system.
Hey, this is one of those situations where a person would like to have the wisdom of Solomon. I, I just feel that the work that the... Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. The work that the people at Riverview have done through the years has been good for myself and the community. If anything, I would ask to hold off on this simply because of the fact that this seems rushed to me. I had each presented their positions... I had each presented their positions, but it's really been hard to learn of any additional, uh, any additional information. So, it's, for me, it's kind of rushed this evening, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Person Stack. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I'd like to make a motion and, um, cease debate, move on to a vote, please.
You have a motion to cease debate, is there a second? You have a motion and a second, move into a vote. We'll need two-thirds to, uh, cease debate. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? One dissent, that passes. Jim also voted in the affirmative for the record. So, uh, the motion has been made to cease debate. I will make one comment, and I don't want to disrespect the process or Robert's Rule of Order, because obviously I've been thrust into the center of a decision on the Planning Commission to really decide the fate and of, of a local. Alder Person Rayom?
Just a question, your honor.
Sure, please, yep.
There was a motion that passed to cease debate.
Okay.
And I believe, my thoughts, and I guess I, we'd go to the city attorney, is that, um, I think if you wanted to participate in the debate, you could have, but also by relinquishing the chair by the time, when you speak. So I just asked the city attorney, uh, after ceasing debate, if there can be more comments about it because there may be others here that wanna...
Please, city attorney, please.
Well, actually, if there is a motion to cease debate, then it, it should, uh, proceed directly to, uh, the motion. However, I, I'm, and that's, but, but the other thing I want to point out is the mayor is actually a member of the council, technically a member of the council, and, uh, does not need to relinquish the chair if he wishes to speak on an issue. However, I agree with Alder Person Rayom that, uh, the motion was to cease debate, and we can proceed with the, the call for the, uh...
Call for the vote, okay.
The vote.
I will respect that. Thank you, Alder Person Rayom, for the point of order, and Attorney Schill for pointing out the clarification. Please, uh, cast your ballots. The motion is to approve a petition filed by Aspirous Clinics Incorporated on behalf of Gordon and Donna Manke Trust and MWH Real Estate and an ordinance for the direct annexation of property located at the northeast corner of Chestnut Street and 20th Street from the town of Grand Rapids. Jim, please cast your...
Right, mine would be no.
In the negative.
Motion was defeated, five a's and three n's.
Okay, we'll move into item eight. The report of the Planning Commission held August 8th, concerning, uh, the Planning Commission met at 5:00 PM on Monday, August 4th, 2014 in the City Hall, City Hall Council Chambers. All members were present. Also attending were Sue Schill, Adam Teagan, and Alder Persons Rayom, Kellogg, Hepp, and Dolan. A list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. First item of business was the approval of the report from July 7th, 2014. From the Planning Commission, there was a motion and a second to approve the report. That motion carried. Item two, there were no maps or plaits received. There was a motion to hold the two public hearings for Aspirous Clinics together. Item three was the public hearing on Plan 140476 on Cross Paz LLC. The applicant is requesting an amendment to an existing planned unit development to allow the modification of their existing master sign plan within the B2 general commercial district. The subject property, I'd ask the members of the audience to please excuse yourselves respectfully so we can continue our order of business and carry your chatter outside the council chambers, thank you. No one spoke against the request. Item four was action on Plan 140476, Cross Paz LLC. Bryce Nelson, representing Cross Paz LLC, was present for this item. The applicant is requesting an amendment to an existing planned unit development and master sign plan to allow the modification of an existing non-conforming freestanding sign on the subject property. The property is located at 1,000 East Riverview Expressway within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Currently, the subject property is developed with the multi-tenant Cross Paz Commercial Center. Current tenants include Woodlands Church, Ministry Health, and Driver's Education Academy, among others. The center has been going through an update on the exterior, interior, and signage over the last five years, and most recently, the center received approval for a master sign plan on the property which included a freestanding sign for their tenants. However, the property internally located on the northeast corner of the parcel does not provide visibility from either A Street South or the East Riverview Expressway. The master sign plan also called for a consistent look and feel for the tenant signs located on the building. As the tenant spaces continue to build out, the owner and leasing agent have been experiencing issues attracting re, national retailers who desire some sort of visibility on the adjacent roadways. This normally wouldn't be an issue, but other freestanding sign located on the property which offers visibility on A Street South only provides signage for adjoining properties. Subject property is located near the busy intersection of 8th and Expressway. The property is currently zoned commercial and is developed with a commercial use. Based on the review of this request, staff would recommend approval of Plan 140476, subject to the conditions in the report. There was a motion and a second to approve the request with the conditions. Item five was the annexation request in which there was a public hearing held, which has been disposed of at the beginning of this agenda. Item seven, uh, which was also disposed of just previously, uh, was the annexation request from Aspirous Clinics. There was a motion and a second to recommend the approval of the request, which was, motion was carried with three members voting in the negative. Item eight was action on Plan 140464. Dr. Tom Volker, Dean Danner, and Gary Wachikowski, all representing Aspirous Clinics, were present for the item. Let's see. Based on review of the request, staff did recommend approval of Plan 140464, and there was a motion and a second to recommend the approval of the rezoning from R2 District to B5 District. That motion carried with Aaron Rosecrans and Burkhauser voting in the negative. And then they move into the action on Plan 140465, which, in which, I'm trying to find my place in the report. There was a motion and a second to recommend the approval for the conditional use to allow personal and professional services within the B5 general mixed-use district. Subject to the conditions presented in the staff report, motion carried with Aaron Rosecrans and Burkhauser voting in the negative. And item 10 was a referral from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, there was a motion and a second not to recommend the requested ordinance change. The motion carried with Rosecrans and Aaron abstaining. Motion to adjourn and a second, then the commission adjourned. Commissioners, I'd entertain, um, a motion on the request, or on the, on the report.
I'd make a motion to approve and place on file, and then one question.
A motion by Kirkpatrick, is there a second? A motion and a second by Dolan, uh, he'll, please, would you ask your question?
Thank you, mayor. I just would like a little clarification regarding item number 10. Motion, it appears, is to not recommend, so to deny a request of an ordinance change. Is that accurate?
That's correct, mm-hmm.
Okay, so, they were looking for temporary chicken wire fence, and, and the commission said no to that, that's accurate?
The Board of Zoning Appeals said no. It was then referred to the Planning Commission then to consider an ordinance change that would allow for the future additional...
So then both of those entities have, have said no to that request?
That's correct, yeah. The Board of Zoning Appeals did deny the appeal, but made the referral to consider changing to the, um...
To council.
To the, yeah, to the Planning Commission, correct. Yep, you got it, mm-hmm. Any other discussion on that report? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots. Jim, uh, if you could express your voice vote so Shane can get it up here.
Jim?
Mine would be no.
Motion carried, seven a's and one n.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is, uh, item number nine. Under new business, item A is a resolution supporting publics, public aquatics facilities, which is attachment number nine, in-year packets. Council members, this was a referral, or an attachment, really, that I had made and referral to the council, uh, this month. And, uh, I'm just gonna find it in my packet here. Thank you. Council members, I can read it if you'd like, if someone would like me to do so. Essentially, the resolution, uh, came as a result of, of many months of questions and discussion regarding public aquatic facilities, recognizing that for many years in our city's history, public aquatic facilities have made, uh, have played a role in the quality of life of our residents. And, uh, following, um, the commitment of the building, the first pool in 1913, and construction of the east side pool in '55 and the west side pool in '78, and, uh, given the strong participation from the community in the 2012 citizen survey, identified recreation as a top priority. And, um, I think all of us can agree to some level that our city pool and aquatics offerings do play a role in that. So, uh, I would open up, uh, the item for discussion or entertain a motion on the resolution. Alder Person Rayom, I think you're first, go ahead, please.
Just, uh, maybe a question. This comes at the, a time when the Y and Riverview announcement was. I, I guess the question to start with is, um, for an aquatic facility, I think for those that know me, I've supported that for, uh, many years. So the question I have, though, your honor, is that, is to continue on, the city, um, to look at an aquatic center? Is that different, something else than what, uh, the Y and, uh, Riverview are entering into? Is that, is that what your thoughts are?
Sure, it's a very fair question, yeah. So, uh, item B under new business was the discussion of the formation of a pool ad hoc committee, and I think that's the question served at item B, but it's a very valid question.
That's why it probably came up in A.
Yeah, and please, I'm glad you asked it. So, uh, the resolution, as you can tell, is, is fairly generic in its, uh, in, in the way it references aquatic facilities. It doesn't name any specific parties in it. It calls for renewal and its support for aquatic facilities for our residents to work and collaborate with community partners to find solutions to ensure our aquatic offerings remain in our community. So, very much just looking for a vote of support from the council, one, to, to reaffirm to the public that while we've discussed the challenges with the Mead Pool, that it's also on our mind and on our radar that we are going to look for and explore other options. So, that's really the intent, uh, here of the resolution this evening. Other discussion? With that, I'd entertain a motion. Alder Person Furkey, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alder Person Rayom, or Alder Person Kellogg, whichever one was caught in the, Alder Person Kellogg. Uh, any discussion, further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots. Thanks, Jim, glad you're still with us. And Terry, if you could hit the confirm button, please, on your remote. Thank you.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Thank you. Uh, moving to the next item on our agenda is, item B is the discussion on the formation of a pool ad hoc committee. Per the question of Alder Person Rayom, there was some communication that went from myself to the council over the last number of weeks related to, um, the potential to develop a pool ad hoc committee, and, uh, I'd entertain, uh, kind of a discussion or suggestion from the council on how we want to approach that. I think it, it mirrors really the role of the Park and Rec Commission. Uh, I think we can comprise the committee of a couple members of the council, maybe up to three, no more than three, maybe two. I could ask the city attorney if she's got some suggestion on, on how, uh, how many council members would sit on that committee. I'd also imagine that, um, members of city staff who've been involved in aquatics discussions in the last number of years can participate in this as well, as we've, really with the intent, number one, of identifying and understanding the current usage of our existing city pool, to what extent residents are using it. The second piece is to understand what are the really significant and, um, challenging situation we're faced with related to the pool in terms of future investments, and how far off are those investments? Uh, and then third, how do we want to engage residents? Engaging residents in a solution that meets their needs and, and what they want, I think is critical, uh, to getting that voice, um, heard on the council so that way we can carry this forward. So, uh, I would mention those three items in which I would open up for discussion. Alder Person Rayom, please.
Thank you, uh, I'm not gonna dominate this. Your honor, as, as the discussion goes, uh, I would be interested in being on this. I guess I'd rack my brain if there, of others in the community over the past that, uh, have been interested in that, if they still would be. But, uh, for the time being, that's the comments I have on it.
Thank you. Alder Person Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. This, this is kind of, I don't want to say old territory, but it, it certainly feels like it, since this has been a discussion that's been ongoing for as long as I've been here and longer. I would hope that, I'm anticipating an approval of an ad hoc committee. I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but that's, you know, just what I anticipate because it can do no harm to the discussion and, and to what plays out. But I would hope that whatever's found, you know, we, we do have a couple of plans that have been looked at, reviewed over the last five, 10, probably even 15 to 20 years. So I would hope that, um, that those plans are, are dusted off the shelf again, like we always talk about dusting off all the comprehensive plans and the riverfront plans. You know, that those get dusted off, reevaluated, looked at. Is this worthwhile, is this something that we should, we should, uh, can, you know? And just not bring back again. But I would, I would really hope that this would move forward, and I think that, um, I think that we had a good discussion a year ago with the YMCA when they came before the, uh, the Finance Committee. And I think that there is, there is definitely room there to continue those discussions, and I hope that they would also want to continue those discussions that we had that evening. So, I'm not gonna say that I've got the time to sit on it, but I really do hope that this, this goes somewhere this time. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, and I think to echo that, and that's, I didn't address part, that part of your question, I'll do that now since I didn't do it previously, of whether or not, and I, I would just make a comment that I think the timing is right for that discussion to be had with other partners. So, Alder Person Kellogg, yeah, Kellogg is next.
If it is passed, I would like to be on.
Okay. Alder Person Rayom, I'm sorry, I've got my order mixed up here. Got them backwards. Go ahead, Alder Person Rayom, please.
That's all right. I guess, uh, I probably jumped the gun by saying I'd be on it, but, uh, so I would, uh, make a motion that we, uh, and if it comes out that I'm not on it, I'm not on it. So, uh, I'll just back up, I guess, to what the item is to start with. I guess Scott Miagle said that, so, uh, but anyway, I'll make a motion, uh, of the formation of a pool ad hoc committee.
And is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Attorney Schill, did you have a comment? I know we've gone back and forth about it's, uh, just maybe for the council to understand if it's an ad hoc committee, kind of what its, uh, role may be and, and how it will advise the council. If you could please make some comments of the sort.
Well, I think, for me, the, the consideration is whether it's subject to the open meetings and open records law, and I think in discussions with the mayor, I, it, it should be subject to that. So they, they, there will be open meetings, there will be minutes and notices given to the public. So, once you've crossed, crossed that threshold, then it can kind of be whatever, whatever you want, whether you're directing the mayor to assemble this committee, whether you want to get involved in actually, you know, choosing the members or creating the number of members, giving them mission and direction. But otherwise, those types of details would have been what, would have driven whether it was an, uh, governmental body subject to the open meeting. So once, once we're, we're past that saying it is, then, you know, the, the structure of it and such can be whatever the body wants. So, I guess, I mean, I would, I, I think to, to tighten it up a little bit, it would be good if the, the council themselves either directs the mayor with some general guidelines to create the committee, or the committee that the council themselves is going to work on that. And whether that's gonna happen tonight or not, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure. But it can really be however you want it to be as long as everyone's understood that it's a, kind of a subunit of, of government, and there's gonna be subject to open records and open meetings.
Alder Person Dolan?
Thank you, mayor. Tom...
Tom kind of jumped the gun there on me, I wanted to get in. But I would like to put my name in the ring to be on that ad hoc committee. I think it's a great thing for the city to have something going on, and I'm all for it.
Thank you. So with that said, we've done, had a couple of people volunteer or self nominate. I think, you know, that can be a start. I guess I'd ask for other, I mean, we can have that group meet with a comeback, come back with a recommendation to the council. If there's others that are really passionate and want to be involved, we'll have it as a committee of the whole. There'll be other opportunities, I think, for future dialogue. I do see Brett Salschider from the YMCA is here. Brett, did you have any comments to make related to aquatics? And I know you've expressed to me the opportunity for other community entities to be able to partner and participate in your discussion.
Aquatic facilities are a great need. We've been hearing this, this topic for quite a number of years. And so there's a way for us to look at partnership and address that need. We're very open and very much welcome that conversation.
Thank you. Alderperson's, any questions for Brett Polley's here? See anybody? Okay, great. So we'll come back then with a, with a recommendation to the council on, on the kind of structure of the committee, and then if we want to make it a formal committee of the council and discuss it from there. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Jim? Jim, did you have a vote on the matter? The motion is to create or to form a pool ad hoc committee. I think, Jim.
Yes, I vote aye.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Thank you. Item 10, standing council committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held August 5th.
Thank you, Mayor, guests and viewers at home. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:15 PM on Tuesday, August 5th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of the other attendees is in the city clerk's office. Item number one, the meeting was called to order. Item number two, there were no special beer license applications. Item number three, a request from Doris Luskowski on behalf of the Hope and Community of Smile for Lacy for approval of the special events application for September 6th and 7th. Part A, street closures. Number one, First Street North from East Jackson Street, not including the intersection to Oak Street, including the intersection. Number two, Second Street North from East Jackson Street, not including the intersection to East Grand Avenue, not including the intersection. Number three, Oak Street from Second Street North to the alley next to Paul Gross Jewelers. Item B was vending. Item C, a special beer license filed by Pub Pilots of Wisconsin Rapids with a premises description which includes Veterans Parks and the streets that are requested to be closed. It was moved and seconded to approve the special events application, the motion carried. Item four, a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Area Habitat for Humanity to waive the cost of the installation of sanitary sewer and water leads to 1122 Mile Avenue. It was moved and seconded to deny the request to waive the cost of installation of the sanitary sewer, the motion carried. Item five, a request from the Planning and Economic Development to give authorization for the mayor to sign an annexation petition for parcels 07-00302 and 07-00302A. It was moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the papers, motion carried. Item six, a request from the Director of Planning and Economic Development to fund hiring additional help on a temporary basis to assist with hail damage inspections. It was moved and seconded, the motion carried, to approve the request. Item seven, a request from Deputy Chief Scott Young to purchase chassis for the replacement ambulance and to have Foster Coach begin building the ambulance. It was moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the chassis for $47,429, and the total cost for Foster Coach to build the ambulance is $150,349. It will be purchased from the Vehicle Replacement Fund, the motion carried. Item eight, a request to renew the Assessment Services Contract with Forward Appraisal LLC, Steve Sheperl, for another two years, July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2016. It was moved and seconded to renew the Assessment Service Contract for $48,000 per year for two years, the motion carried. Item nine, renew and approve the 2014 Mean Rapids View Park Railing Contract, that item was tabled. Item 10, beverage operator license application. It was moved and seconded to approve licenses for new applicants, the motion carried. Item B, it was moved and seconded to renew license for other applicants, the motion carried. Item C, it was moved and seconded to deny a license as recommended by the police chief for one person, the motion carried. Item 11 was the auto of the bills vouchers 55627 from 6114 through 5635673114. It was moved and seconded to approve the bills, motion carried. Item 12A, an open session, it was moved and seconded to go into closed session under section 19.85, paragraph 1E of the Wisconsin statutes, motion carried unanimously. E, in closed session, the committee discussed the status of a promissory note from Evan W. Fiberglass LLC, EEC Corrosions Incorporated, in a request to extend the terms of the promissory note dated February 28, 2007. Item C, commission returned to open session, it was moved and seconded to approve the extension of the terms for one year till August 28, 2015. Meeting adjourned at 6:11 PM. Look for a motion to approve.
A motion to approve, is there a second? Motion by Dolan, second by Whirl. Move into discussion. Yeah, so as you see in the clerk's note, we may go into closed session. If you'd like a closed session at the end of the council, Alderperson Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I would like to hold out item 12 for the option to go into closed session at the end of the meeting.
For the option or to go into closed?
May I, may I ask for the opinions of the other aldermen? Would anyone else like to go into closed session at the end of the meeting? Otherwise, I'll rescind my, my request. No one cares to go into closed? I'll rescind my request.
Okay. So the motion remains to approve the balance of the entire report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting held August 5th. Seeing no further discussion, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Jim? Aye.
Thanks, Jim.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Moving to item B under item 10, the Public Works Committee meeting held August 5th. Alderperson Rayom, please.
Thank you, your honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 5th, 2014, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Mayor Verwink, Dave Laspa, and Joe Lightstead. A list of others present is on file in clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, the committee held an open house for the street reconstruction project on 15th Avenue North at addresses 150, 160, 161, 170, and 171. Item three, the committee then held public hearings and considered final resolutions for the installation of municipal improvements, which include curb and gutter, sidewalk, concrete driveway approaches, and permanent street surfacing on 15th Avenue North at the addresses I previously listed. Speaking in favor was Benjamin Chaffee, owner of the property at 161 15th Avenue North. No one spoke against, against the project. There was a motion and a second to approve the following final resolution for the installation of municipal improvements, which shall include curb and gutter, sidewalk, concrete driveway approaches, and permanent street surfacing on 15th Avenue for the addresses 150, 160, 161, 170, and 171. Curb and gutter shall be charged at a rate of 50% of the special assessment cost, the motion carried. The resolution is attached with the minutes. Item four was to review an award to the low qualified bidder for the 17th Avenue South Boring and Jackine Contract. No bids were received. The engineering department is requesting that this project be rebid with revision suggested by potential bidders. There was a motion and a second to rebid the contract, the motion carried. Item five, proposed bike trail extensions for the bike route network as part of a complete streets program as follows. A, install a bike trail on the closed section of Railroad Street from First Street to 100 Feet West. B, widen the sidewalk in Veterans Memorial Park from East Grand Avenue to the River Wall. C, install a bike trail on Oak Street from 20th Street to State Highway 54 crossing at Peach Street. D, install a bike trail connection from First Street to the East Side Recreation Trail at Drake Street. There was a motion and a second to approve the proposed bike trail extensions for the bike route network with review of potential to add additional sidewalk for permanent picnic tables for item B. The motion carried, item B was to widen the sidewalk in Veterans Memorial Park. Item six, solicitation for engineering design services for the intersection modification project at Eighth Street South and East Grand Avenue. There was a motion and a second to approve the solicitation for engineering design services for the intersection modification project at Eighth Street South and East Grand Avenue, the motion carried. Item seven, solicitation for engineering design services for the reconstruction of East Grand Avenue between Third Street South and Eighth Street South. There was a motion and a second to approve the solicitation for engineering design services for the reconstruction of East Grand Avenue between Third Street South and Eighth Street South, and the motion carried. Item eight, to install a no parking restriction on Oak Street, the north side, from Third Street to Fourth Street. There was a motion and a second to remove the no parking restriction on Oak Street, the north side, from Third Street to Fourth Street, and that motion carried. That's attachment one in our packet. Item nine, remove the no parking restriction on the east side of Fourth Street North between East Grand Avenue and Oak Street. There was a motion and a second to approve removing the no parking restriction on the east side of Fourth Street North between East Grand Avenue and Oak Street, the motion carried. That has attachment one, too, is that, I don't remember if it was. Item 10, study the intersections of Third Street and East Grand Avenue and Second Street and East Grand Avenue to reconfigure lanes due to changing to a four-way stop intersection. There was a motion and a second to approve a study of the two intersections to reconfigure lanes due to changing to a four-way stop intersection, motion carried. Item 11 was to review the proposed 2014 Public Works Project schedule. The committee reviewed the work schedule for 2014. 12, item 12 was to review the referral list, the committee reviewed, reviewed the referral list. Item 13 was a motion and a second to adjourn, the motion carried, the meeting adjourned at 7:23 PM. And with that, your honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Rayom, a second by Kirkpatrick. Kirkpatrick, you're the first to speak.
Thank you. Item five, section D, install a bike trail connection from First Street to the East Side Recreation Trail at Drake Street. I feel like we had made, or that when the motion was made, or, I don't know if it was by you, or when I seconded it to request that that, the discussion was regarding the placement of where that portion of the trail would enter? Was that, did that, did we make an agreement that that came further to the, I guess, what do you want to call it, the south, or to, yeah, I guess it would be the south on First Street?
Yeah, that was in question. What, what have we decided? What, what did you feel would be the best? Do you talk about the elevation? You talk about the elevation?
What we can do is, we wanted to utilize the intersection of Drake Street for allow pedestrians to cross, and we can parallel the bike trail with First Street until we get past that hill and then connect into the bike trail.
Okay, okay. I just, the way it was worded on here, it just didn't, didn't feel like what I remembered, but that's fine. Thanks.
In further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Jim? Aye.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Moving to item C under 10, standing council committee reports, the Human Resources Committee meeting held August 5th. Alderperson Whirl.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow councilmen, viewers at home. The Human Resources Committee met at 4:08 PM on Tuesday, August 5th, 2014, in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present, all others on file in the clerk's office. Item two, consider a request to approve out of state travel for the GIS specialists to attend the Code for America Summit in San Francisco in September. There was a motion and a second to approve the request. There is no charge for the conference and travel, and hotel expenses are covered in the information technology budget, the motion carried. Item three, consider a request to approve fall recreation hires. There was a motion and a second to approve filling 24 fall recreation positions. All positions have been budgeted for, motion carried. Item four, consider a request from the Director of Planning and Economic Development to hire additional help on a temporary basis to assist with hail damage inspections. There was a motion and a second to increase work hours for the current inspectors and to hire additional help on an as needed basis to assist with permits and inspections, motion carried. Item five, review health plan funding and approve proposed health and dental insurance premiums for 2015. There was a motion and a second to continue health and dental premiums at a current rate for 2015, motion carried. Item six, in open session, the committee will go to, will go, excuse me, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85, paragraph 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting or other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasonings require a closed session. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken with all voting in the affirmative, motion carried. In closed session, the committee discussed collective bargaining strategies. The committee adjourned at 5:05 PM in closed session. With that, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes and place them on file.
We have a motion, is there a second? A motion by Whirl, a second by Furkey. Move into discussion. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderperson Stack.
Go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Item number four, do you have a time limit on that? The motion was made to increase work hours. Do we, are we doing that through the end of the year perhaps? Or do we carry this into 2015? I'd just be interested in knowing what Mr. Tegan wants, how long Mr. Tegan wants this authority.
Well, I'd like the authority for a really long time. But the intention is just through the end of this year, in the expectation that the majority of the inspections should be done by winter.
All right, so you're saying by the end of this year?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? No. Seeing none, please continue to stack, or stack, what's, stack your ballots, cast your ballots. Jim, what is your vote, please?
Aye.
It's a little bit warm in here.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Item 11, miscellaneous reports. Item A through L are listed in your packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that report? Are those reports? Alderperson Rayom, please.
Thank you, your honor. It's item K. Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, did their job. And just, to bring this up, it's a constituent of mine in the neighborhood, so he has, and it deals with fence. He has a really ni, it's a real nice looking fence, by the way. It's across his backyard. Problem is, and he went through all the rules, I It's across his backyard. Problem is, and he went through all the rules, I think, to get the appeals board. But he, he has had problems, I understand, with people, persons, whatever, in the back. So he has gone to, taken the step that he's blocked out his windows in the back. Now, his request, as I understand, and as he told me, I couldn't make the meeting that day I was working, but I'm not sure how long his property is, but the fence goes across it. But he is, was asking to extend the five panels, not two feet, the ordinance is six feet. He was asking to increase to eight feet. It doesn't seem like much to me. It was noted by one of the people on the commission that actually there was a dip in the back, that actually the six foot height of the fence is technically less than that because of the slope in the back in that section, along the fence. So I bring that up just, I guess, for the council to consider, or if it should go back to the zoning board of appeals. But I don't think any of us should have, I guess, make the decision if we are out blocking our windows out entirely. Other steps were asked of him to take, I believe, there in, I think, in our minutes here, that, where I read him. And he would, he didn't want to go to those steps. This was, he felt more appropriate anyway at this time. He also, he told me that when, whenever that would be, he would move, you know, sell the house and that, that he would remove what was added. There's one other thing he said that it'd be, oh, if the situation improved, that he would be willing to lower it, to take that two fence extension off. I guess I would like the council to reconsider it, if it's, if necessary, to go back to the Board of Appeals. I guess that we can do that, but I, you know, I, he's made, I think, taken the right steps. He's not asking to raise the entire fence. He's not asking to, that it'll be there forever. So I guess there is some predetermined time, but we don't know what that is. So I just like, I'd like to make that comment.
I defer to Adam, there's a statement at the end of the report, or the city attorney, to speak to the finality of the nature of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So either one of you two want to weigh in on?
Right. The Board of Zoning Appeals is independent from the council. It's a quasi-judicial body, so you have no say in what they do. The, the person who applied for the variance could, has appellate rights that are given to him. I guess as to why the Board of Appeals did what they did, I think they followed the law in the giving of variances. A variance has to be unique to the property. It does not have anything to do with who's living in the property or who's living across the street from you. If we tried to do our zoning based on personalities and, and people living in different houses, and it's, the law's clear that it has to be a unique property hardship. And so, I don't know if Adam has anything to add, but it's final in terms of the Board of Appeals. There's nothing the council can do about it, but the appellant, or the claimant can appeal if he wishes.
Anything further, Adam? Nothing further. All the person, Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I, just a question. So if this individual were to plant arbovitus or something along those lines, and those would grow to 10 feet, that would be legal? There would be nothing stopping him from having them at six feet, eight feet, 10 feet, 20 feet? Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
So, and I've seen and I know instances of, you know, places where arbovitus have been used as a border fence in planting. So I guess I, and if we can't do anything about it, if we can't rescind it or overturn it, you know, so be it, whatever. I guess I just don't understand the rationale behind saying that this plant can be 12 feet tall, but your fence can't be eight feet tall. Am I insane?
Well, no, but I guess, no, well, I don't know. I don't reserve judgment on that. Well, it's, you know, it, we, we don't regulate, you know, you're, a tree can be 100 feet, but the, I mean, I don't know how to respond to that. Vegetation, I mean, Adam, do you have anything to, to add to that? I mean, you don't need necessarily a permit to, to plant a tree, and it's natural and it's...
I guess ultimately, the main difference is, one is a man-made structure, which is regulated by your zoning ordinance, the other is a planted, natural thing. So that's the difference as to why one is regulated and one is not. But a caveat on that, for example, we do have regulations that would restrict that within the front yard, for example, within a vision triangle or something like that. But within the rear yard such as this, no, there wouldn't be any restrictions on it.
Is, is there a restriction that says, obviously, you want to put the fence, you come down, you take out a permit, you get your fence permit. Now, you want to actually, I really like how arbovitus look. I want a fence made of arbovitus. And I've got a long-term plan. I'm going to live here for 80 years. I don't care how long it takes. I want them 20 feet tall. I intend to plant my arbovitus as a fence. Do you need to take out a fence permit to plant those plants?
No. All the person, all the person, I'm sorry, Kirkpatrick, are you finished?
Yeah, I just, I, I guess I'm just kind of seeing a bit of craziness in, in how this is, you know, how this is finalized, I guess.
All the person, Dolan, please.
I guess, you know me, I just got a smart aleck comment. But, ah, man, if you want to see 20-foot arbovitus, just come to my backyard, because my neighbors got them. The only thing you can do is if they go over your sprinklers, I know you can clip the bottom four feet off them.
There we have it. Any further discussion? Seeing, oh, no, I'm sorry, we don't have a motion. Entertained a motion to approve the report?
Motion to approve the reports, place them on file.
Motion by Kirkpatrick, second by, see if you could hit the button, Furkey. Moving to a vote, please cast your ballots.
Jim?
Aye.
Terry, if you could confirm, please.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Ns.
Item 12, items for new business at the September 16th council member. Item A is the election of a Water Works and Lighting Commission member, in which the clerk's office, if you want to explain the process, shame of that, please.
Basically, if you just want to submit a resume to our office, and then we'll get you before the next council meeting.
Item 13, referral of communication to committees, nothing listed unless someone else has something else. And the closed session is no longer necessary because the item was dispensed within the finance report. So I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you for being here. Thank you, those watching at home, and thank you to council members.